Faster.
I don't like this.
I love that. Good job, boy.
Got one like that at home.
Well, see, you're used to it.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the December 4, 2023 meeting of the Hampden Board Selectmen to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, which is the republic for which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are meeting in the Town House Auditorium. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Zoom. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? I'm all looking at you, Dalton.
Can't see what he said.
Yeah, he did. Dalton is recording. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda, we have a couple of minutes to look at. November 20th, 2023. At the meeting when former Senator Govee came, and we had a pretty good discussion about Mill Pond. We certainly appreciate the input from the Conservation Commission and Gary at that time. Also, that discussion of the Fire Department RFQ, updating stormwater, and pretty much a recap of other things we were reviewing at that time.
Lauren, we just got a typo in the minutes of the page.
Where is that?
For Selectmen Revist, in time, he could not attend. You have to go.
Oh, yep. Thank you for catching that.
Second.
Approval with that slight typo change, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of November 27. We met with Entree. We had a meeting with the Charter Representative over Zoom. There's a candidate for the Fire Department. Bring the member to the Stevens and the Building Committee.
Division?
The division thing is the assessors thing, right?
Did they have time to, Entree, talk to you guys about division?
Backups?
Backups.
I have not talked to Entree directly about that, no.
Okay.
Not yet.
Remove approval of November 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take your line.
Thank you.
Okay, and now 6:05, roughly, we have the Board of Assessors. Assessors, they are.
Good evening.
All two of you, and Kelly, the real brains behind the outfit.
Absolutely.
So, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Lady.
Thank you.
We have the normal tax classification hearing and some other questions we want to go over, but we'll start with the tax classification.
Okay, sure. Uh, yes, yes, you have the packets in front of you as well. One to the packet.
It's going to be in your folder.
Yes, that's it, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that you had that.
Just a quick for the audience, uh, Town Administrator Bob is under the weather. So, some of the documents that would normally be available to display on Zoom are not available.
They will be.
Speedy recovery.
Available on the town website, though, on the Assessors page, so you can look them up. Um, yeah, so, good evening. So, we're here for the tax classification hearing. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide information to the Board of Selectmen regarding the tax rate options available to the town under the property tax classification. So first, I'd just like to give you a quick overview. All of our fiscal year 2024 values for real and personal property have been approved by the Department of Revenue, and the town's valuation has increased by almost $75 million. So, the new town value is $877,611,888. Now, of that increase, just over $6.5 million was due to new growth, and contributing to the fake, this figure, was residential new growth from new constructions, additions, and other improvements, as well as several new parcels that were created this year. And the commercial new growth was $635,800 from improvements to commercial buildings. And the new growth from personal property was just, uh, was $1,389,485. And just under half of the new growth from the personal property came from our four public utility accounts, which are Mass Electric, EverSource Gas, EverSource N-Star, and New England Power Company. And this year, we did not have any new solar arrays come on the books, so it's a pretty good new growth number for not having any new arrays. Now, just to give an overview, the value of the average single-family home has increased from $346,000 in fiscal '23 to $377,000 in fiscal '24. So, that represents a 9% increase, or $31,000 in value. And although the tax rate has not been set or approved yet by the Department of Revenue for fiscal '24, we do anticipate it being much lower this year because of the increase in values. As you know, the fiscal '23 tax rate was $1687. For fiscal '24, the current estimate is $15.66, which is a reduction of $1.21, but that, that is still subject to change until we get it set by the Department of Revenue.
Kelly, I know I asked you in email about the 9% increase in evaluations. Just for public record, can you explain how that's calculated?
Sure. So, basically, each year, we go through a process. We have a vendor that does a statistical analysis to see what the sales were for each class of property. So, for single-family homes, all of the sales were from calendar year 2022, and they're all sales in Hampton. And so, basically, they see where we fall with our values in comparison to those sales. And we're required to be within a specific range. If we fall outside of that range, we need to make an adjustment before they can be approved.
So, is, are they expecting some type of increase year after year? Is that, when you say we're not, if they're not in that range?
So, it depends, every year is different. We, we have to go based off of the market for the calendar year that, that the data's coming from. Some years, it could be a decrease, some years, it would be an increase. It all depends on what people are paying for properties.
Do you remember offhand what last year's increase was?
Last year was 12%.
12%?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
In your email, I believe you went back three or four years and showed the.
I did, yes. I believe it was, um, it was 12% last year. I believe the, the two years prior were 7% each.
So, we're in the same ring?
Yes.
Now, you talk about a pretty good decrease in the tax rate, and as we've said many times, that doesn't really relate to the tax bill, because you have to factor in the values as well. So, give us the bad news.
With the values, with the, with the values, with the tax bill? So, it's actually not such bad news. So, to, for the average taxpayer in Hampton, uh, who owns a single-family home, their bill would increase this year by $66.80, which is a 1.14% increase.
So, $6 a month.
Right.
Not bad.
Yeah, not bad.
Not bad, right. So, that represents just about a 1% increase?
Yes, 1.14%.
So, when we were talking at town meeting and would work with the financial team, we were hoping to get the increase under 4%. And I think with good work by everybody, it came down a lot less than that. Commend the assessors, the advisory treasurer and accountant for all the work they did, finding every drawer with cash and just bringing it back.
Thank you.
So, you have your several motions.
Yes, so tonight, there are four votes that are required that will determine the share of the levy to be borne by each class of property. The first vote is a single versus split tax rate. So, adopting a minimum residential factor of one would result in a single tax rate. Adopting a minimum residential factor of less than one would result in a split tax rate. And there would be, which, that means there would be one rate for residential properties, and then another higher rate for all of the commercial, industrial, and personal properties.
I believe in your email, you talked about the fact that historically, we've been at the 85, 15, actually increased more residential this year from prior year.
Yes, it's been quite a few years since we've had a shift. This year, because we've had new residential properties and new parcels, we're now at 86% residential and 14% for all of the commercial, industrial, personal property combined.
I know in previous years, you've made the point, the assessors have made the point that, in your opinion, it would represent kind of an unfair burden that wouldn't actually help the residential tax bill much, but it might really put kind of a burden on the commercial and business properties by going to a higher rate for them.
Which is true, because it, and actually, you can take a look at the packet that I provided here. I'll give you an example. So, if, if, um, if the board had decided to do a split, I give a couple of exam, of examples here, either 125% shift or 150% shift. Now, doing that maximum shift of 150, it would lower the average single-family tax bill by $493.87, but it would increase the average commercial, industrial, personal property bill by $6,718.14. And for a 125% shift, it would decrease the residential bill by $248.82, but it would increase the commercial, industrial, personal property by $3,363.36. And with a smaller number, number of commercial, industrial, personal properties, not sure if that would be a benefit.
What would the recommendation assessors be?
Well, I think traditionally, for a number of years, we've assumed the one position, because we've, I know in the past, the board has talked about, the select board has talked about, a lot of the businesses are owned by people who live in the town, and so really, you're just, they're just getting a different bill, a different way, uh, because a lot of the residents own the businesses, so, um, and because there's so little of the commercial, industrial, personal property, that it's a big shift to them for a little gain on the other side. So, I think in the past, we've recommended a one.
And you see no reason to.
I don't see any reason to be different.
Do you want to explain them all in the vote?
Sure, sure, no problem. So, the second vote tonight is an open space discount. That does not apply because, to us, because the town currently has no properties classified in open space. The third vote is a residential exemption. This exemption would shift the burden within the residential class onto higher-priced and non-owner-occupied properties. This exemption has been adopted in a few communities that have a large number of vacation homes. And then, lastly, is the small commercial exemption. And this exemption shifts the burden from qualifying small businesses to other commercial and industrial properties. Out of the 40 commercial properties, fewer than 10 may qualify for this exemption, and for those few properties, the one who would directly benefit from the exemption would be the owner of the qualifying properties, not the businesses themselves. So, basically, and then we would just have you vote on, on each of those four options, and I do have a form that can be signed once you determine the residential factor.
Norman, has this been a joint vote?
I don't believe so, no. Should be solely a select.
Get your recommendations in. So, you're recommending a single rate, obviously, no on the discount for open space, none.
There's, right, none qualify there, right, no shifting, right, either within the class, right.
Application for.
We have to do all four votes, right?
Yes, they have to be all separate.
Sorry for those.
Yep.
All right, I move we adopt a single tax rate.
A minimum residential factor of one.
Minimum residential factor of one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move we don't have an open space discount.
When did we vote last time? I think we voted, no action on that, because you had no property.
Right, okay.
No, no action.
No action either. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, give me the wording here.
So, number three would be not to adopt the residential exemption.
Okay, I, I move that we do not adopt the residential exemption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move we do not adopt the small commercial exemption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Very good.
And then.
Have to sign that form.
Yes, we'll give you the forms.
How do you think you'll, so you're working with DOR to finalize the.
What the number will actually be, but it should be, we're hoping, we're, we're very close.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, we know how people likes to get that.
Yeah, so, yes, we'd like to get that all wrapped up as soon as possible, so that we can get working on the billing process, so hopefully with the next.
Pay their tax before the end of the fiscal year, or before the end of the.
Right, correct.
On their taxes.
Yeah, I don't think we've, otherwise, they had to do estimated billing and.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think we've done that.
Need to action.
In the morning.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for the work you put into it, Kelly.
Very good, yes, thank you.
I'm sure you guys helped as well.
They do, yes, yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sure. Okay, we had a couple of the questions for you.
Which one would you like to address first?
The quick one would probably be tax work-off, because that's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Sure. So, yes, so, there was a question, or a request for the Board of Assessors to consider making some changes, or to see if there were enough funds available for the Selectmen to make changes, if desired, to the tax work-off abatement program. So, the Board of Assessors did hold a meeting on November 30th to discuss this topic. One of the questions was of increasing the maximum annual abatement amount from $1,500 to $2,000 per applicant, and the second question was if it was possible to increase the number of participants in the program. I know Becky has said there's been quite a bit of interest, and it is a lottery at this point. She was hoping to have a few more spaces available to offer, if the town had positions available, of course. So, the, the second question was to increase from 10 to, up to 14 participants. Now, if both changes were implemented, that would change the annual abatement cost from $15,000 to $28,000. So, the board did discuss this and, and feels that at this time, there is enough available to, to do that. Each year before starting the program, Becky does reach out to our office to see if there still is enough funding to offer to the same number of participants, and we would continue to do that as our, the overlay funding could change, we could have more outstanding liabilities, or an increase in regular exemption applications, which we have had over the last couple of years. So, that's something that we would continue, and if a change needs to be made, or if they cannot offer up to 14 on a certain year, we would let her know.
Good. Nick, you made the point earlier that there is an impact to the employee benefit line by increasing this, and then the amount was.
2,500.
I think it was 2,500.
For everybody?
It was, what was the number?
2,500.
Yeah, 2,500. It's the 7.5% Medicare employer's share and the, I'm sorry, the FICA employer's share and the Medicare 0.45%. Plus a little bit of processing fee, but yeah, there is a little bit of cost that has taken, so it comes out of employee benefits, like the rest of the taxes.
That 2,500 is the current number for the 10, 10.
That would be at the 28,000.
That would be at the 28, okay.
And that would come out of employee benefits, that isn't shown out.
That would come out of employee benefits and not out of this.
Out of the overlay.
Okay, it can't come out of the abatement side, so.
So, the genesis of this is that in October, the governor signed a new.
Tax reform bill. Right. And they increased it as part of that.
Yes.
So, I mean, if the select board wants to increase the number and increase the, the number of jobs and the number that we pay, we think we can do that, but we're, we're a little bit hedging on, and we don't know what we're going to get for abatement applications. We don't know how many people are going to file for exemptions, and so, it appears as though we do have the money to do that going forward. We can always add that money into the overlay when we predict next year, so we can prepare for that if you decide to do it. We can add that in then, the increase, so that we know for sure it's there. But, uh, right now, it, we have it without knowing what's going to happen with those few things that are still to come.
True.
We can adjust it later, we can.
I'm actually optimistic at this point.
Right.
Did we fill all 10 spots last?
I'm sorry?
Did we fill all 10 spots last year?
I believe she did.
Yeah.
And 14, you think you have more enough applications?
I think right now, we have 12 applicants, and the application deadline is December 15.
Okay, how many positions have been requested by the town? More than that?
Two, two for me. No, I think, yeah. I think there's, uh, I think there's 12 or 13.
Okay.
We need to move on. I move to increase eligibility from 10, 14 exemptions for tax work-off.
For calendar year 2024.
Abatements.
Yeah, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for looking into that.
Yep.
There you go.
No problem.
And we had a question about their local lodging.
Yes. Okay. So, yes, so this has to do with a room occupancy excise tax. Basically, there is already a state room occupancy excise tax in place for 5.7%, but in addition to the state excise, Massachusetts cities and towns are permitted to charge a local room occupancy excise tax of up to 6%. And this excise applies to room rentals of 90 days or less in hotels, motels, bed-and-breakfast establishments, and lodging houses. And as of 2019, it also applies to short-term rental properties of 31 days or less. And then, in addition to the up to 6% local excise option, for short-term rentals only, cities and towns are permitted to charge an additional community impact fee of up to 3%, and that is if an operator has more than one property in that locality, or is renting an owner-occupied two or three-family house on a short-term rental basis. So, with this, I've done some research on it, and this is something that is managed by the, by the state, because they're required to register with the state to pay the state excise tax. So, we would request the list from the state to find out how many properties we have in town that are registered, to get an idea of what the, what potential revenue would be at different percentages. I have reached out to the Department of Revenue, to the DLS Data Bank, a few times. They have responded, but they have not gotten the information to me just yet. So, I, once I do receive it, I can let you know, and we can, we can discuss further once I have some actual numbers.
This would have to be voted by the town meeting.
It would, yes.
Yep.
That's correct.
So, at this point, we don't know if anyone qualifies, or if anyone's paying at this point.
Exactly, we have, yeah.
We'll wait to hear back from you at this point, or done, or?
Well, I, I would assume Great Horse qualifies, because they have five lodging places up there now that they rent.
We, we just don't know that, because we don't know if they're registered or not, and that hasn't come back to the state.
Yeah, it all depends on if they register, because I'm not sure if that's included in member fees, if that's any different, so.
Members of guests.
Okay, so, yeah, so I'll have to wait and see, once we get the list back, if they're on there.
Anyhow, I had put this on, because I just saw it as a, as a small source, you know, like, it's not like a lot of towns, we have a lot of hotels or motels.
Yeah.
But it's a little source of revenue.
Right.
You know, and I don't think it harms the businessperson, because it's collected from the person who rented.
Correct.
Is Airbnb part of that as well, or?
I don't think it is.
It's not listed.
Or come rental.
But you mentioned.
But, you know, it may be, I'd have to ask them about that, yeah, that's a good point, because, and, yeah, anything under the 31 days, so if they are renting it out, that, that actually probably would be.
Like, have a qualify.
Yeah, I'm hoping to hear back from them soon, and I have a list of other questions for them, so we'll have more information.
I know you've been focused on the tax class.
Yes. Yeah.
We appreciate the focus on that.
Is that also tied in with the local meal option tax, too? Or are they separate?
I believe they're separate. I can find out for you, though, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that it's a separate.
Most of the towns around here have the local meal, but Waltham doesn't.
Right, they voted against it. East Long Metal has it.
Yeah. Remember, that came up to us one time, and we felt it really was impacting the local people at the same time, looking at the establishments we have here, Norm, that may have been something we discussed. It just seemed like it was just another grab out of the same pockets. It's not like it's Route 20, where a lot of these people are eating better from out of town.
Oh, oh, for the meals one, adding on to the meals one, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, you'd have to, I mean, who knows where their business comes from? I mean, a lot of people go to different restaurants here, from other communities, they drive out here for that, so, I don't know, something to consider down the road, I suppose.
Is there something you want to investigate further, or?
No.
Yes?
I don't.
We'll wait to hear back from you.
I was just curious if they were tied together or not.
Yeah.
Okay, as soon, once I hear back, I'll send Lauren an email to let her know, and then we can schedule another meeting.
Any candidates to fill your position?
We do not. We do not. You know, I spoke, I don't remember when I spoke with Bob about it, but I, I thought he was going to put it on the website and, like, kind of, put it out there and see if anybody, see if it generated any interest.
It'd be a pretty tight skill set, too, at that point, a little bit.
Yeah.
It'll be in the, of course, until May.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we can bring somebody along, and there's, there's classes to take, and, and so, you know, it's just if they have an interest in it, I think, is important. And, and there's a lot of math involved with it, but, or, you know, a little bit about construction, maybe, or value, but if you came in with none of that, I, I think we could still learn, you could still learn those skills.
Well, we've got two pretty experienced people.
And we have an experienced board, so I think we could bring, we can bring him along, or her along, whoever it may be.
And that averages down above. So, we'll reach out to Bob and find out where he has done on posture. Okay, any benefits with that position, or?
Well, you get to work with Bob and I, and Kelly, Jane. Okay, anything else?
We have any more for them?
All right, very good.
That paper, thank you, we'll get it here.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Yes, Jay, yeah, we have, there it is, right there, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, please. Yes, I'm going to take that and upload it right in Gateway. If, if you could, please, that would be great.
She said please.
No, John doesn't like to sign things, it's all voting in next week.
It is, yes, yeah, it's a little money there, on a separate, I know. You know, the state forms, I wish I could design it myself.
All right.
She's not leaving until she.
Perfect, thank you very much. One step closer.
All right, that's, fine, good job. Okay, so next on the agenda is the annual budget kickoff meeting, or as I refer to it, the State of the Union address. Typically, those of us who remember how it goes, we get a short recap from the chair of the Advisory Committee, who this year has to go it alone, because unfortunately, Carol retired from the board, and Doug, are you up to it?
Well, we'll see, won't we?
So, Doug, you have the floor to start.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, once again.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Once again, it seems like this process never stops. Just, simply, we just finished one up not too long ago. Couple of things. Everyone should have a copy of, there's a memo with the, you know, what we're requesting this year, together with the tentative schedule, who are asking for budget submissions. And I emphasize tentative. I understand that everybody may have scheduling issues, and if that pops up, then just contact me. I did put my personal cell on there, which I would ask, I'm not, he published Dalton, I asked him not to publish. The, but if you would contact me directly with any changes or any specific requests, since we still don't have a clerk, I want something to sit in that advisory inbox for a bit. We do have a new member, as most of you probably are aware, John Matthews, was voted as a new member of advisory. Let's move back up to our full complement again. We, advisory discussed what we're going to be requesting for the current budget year, our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. We're going to continue to ask that people submit level service budgets, with the understanding that that may need an increase, or a decrease, or a level budget request. But whatever, whatever generates a level service is what we're asking you to submit as the budget. With regards to salaries, you'll note in the memo that we're asking that people only include salary increases if you know that you're on a step, or your people are on a step, or if it's contractual increases. Otherwise, don't put in any other placeholders, because all that will do is confuse the salary issue going forward. As we get towards the end of the process, we'll sit down like we do each year with every advisory, we'll sit down with the board, or the treasurer, or the accountant, and we'll come up with an agreed-upon COLA. And we'll, we'll calculate those numbers. We, as in the person of Dick, will calculate those COLAs, and we'll include that in the budget request. That's all we have. I just ask that everyone just keep doing what we're doing. As you've heard tonight, our taxes are in good shape, our increase is a very modest figure, which is a testament to the work that everyone's done over the past couple of years, actually, past several years, truth be known. With that, unless anybody has any questions, I have nothing further. John?
Thank you very much.
One second, John, please. Just a quick recap from the board. We had a very good year. And like I said before, as evidenced by the tax rate and the tax bill, a lot of good work by the people in this room to really take care of the town's money. We have a healthy balance in the stabilization fund. Dick does a good job. He's investing it overseas. I'm not sure where. Getting out of the checkup next week with your car. The, but we have a lot of things coming forward. We have a couple of potential construction projects that are going to be big numbers. I don't really know if we have a lot of potential, big number projects coming in to help us with the tax collections, per se. You know, you're on top of the solar fields, things like that. So, we, as always, will be cautious about the big capital numbers that are going to be coming in. And I think that should be reflective of your thoughts about your requests. As I've said before, I understand your boards are talking for yourself. Your job, which you were appointed or elected to do, was to mandate what you need for your department, and I respect that. The parks is asking for something special, because they think the Parks Department needs it, and it's no fault of them. It's then for the collective group to look at, and itemize and categorize them, prioritize them as to how they work out with the town's schedule. But you should, bringing back to advisory, and during your conversations with them, you want to advocate for what you think you need. That's, that's your job, and we respect that. Again, I really commend everybody in this room for the work they've done in keeping the town running on an even keel. I watch about a lot of other town select meetings, and the problems I see around the Commonwealth with other towns, we are blessed by the people we have here. Thank you all. Now, we can start going around the room. In the past, we've had people introduce themselves, but just when you speak, let's do that. I'd like you to just give a, give a quick recap of what you see for the next upcoming year. Just go year twenty twenty five. And we'll start with the, the guy who needs the most money. John?
Thank you. And I'll share.
John, I'm not sure if the camera works over there. If you want to come a little more forward, thank you. Yeah. Nice time, you don't want to waste it.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll share this with, with Aaron, in terms of talking about next year. I wanted to ask a clarifying question, Doc, on the budget preparation. Of course, we follow a little bit of a different process, as you know. In terms of retirements, we usually estimate where a new person's going to be coming. In most cases, it'd be lower. Is that the same process you would imagine we'd follow this year?
In, in terms of your salary line?
Right.
I don't, I don't think it's the, the role of advisory to get involved in the line items within your budget. We deal with your budget as a, as a total figure. What, what you do within that budget is for you and the school committee to, to decide.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, just so there weren't any surprises later.
If, if you have savings with retirement, you know, good, good for you. Hopefully, you can put that to good use.
I think we'd be concerned with any big capital requests that are coming forward. We'd like to know. We appreciate the fact that you shared those with advisory, with us, that there are potential needs for the schools, and that's important.
True. And if, if you want to have, like, just a brief summary of what we're looking for.
I like the word brief. Go ahead.
Okay. I guess going into this year, we have two sort of, three distinct challenges. Our first is that ESER is going away. So we've stabilized our budget a bit over the past few years on ESER. I believe the town's also received an update on our E and D filing. Our E and D, you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we maxed out our E and D. However, over each of the past two years, we've spent nine hundred and fifty thousand and a million fifty thousand in each of the past two years. This year, our E and D is certified at seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, so that's what we have available to put against the budget. So that's going to be another challenge. Special education costs continue to be a challenge across the Commonwealth. Social, emotional issues, behavioral issues, things like that, have been an ongoing challenge for school districts. We're no different. So those are, those are sort of the big three challenges we're going to be facing. I could throw in, you know, chapter seventy is going to continue to be flat for districts like us that haven't shown growth or, or had population declines.
Thank you.
Well, great. Good job, Aaron.
Yeah.
Quickly, I want to make one other point, that during the past six months, I've served as chair, and next week, we do anticipate a board reorganization. The, the good money is on Don taking it over, but there might be a dark horse coming out. You never know.
I guess not.
So, Don will be sharing his personal cell number with everybody, and you can call him twenty-four seven, because we get emails from him at four in the morning.
They do.
Okay, next on the.
That was questions. So that's what the superintendent. What are the, what are the, this is not a money question. What are the, what's the potential for having a, a regional agreement motion, or, or article?
Okay. Let me step back into the camera view to answer that question. So, I did bring along the same timeline that I had shared at the Rotary event last week, just for information purposes, for anyone who wants a copy. There, and as I've said before, there, it's really a four-party process to changing the regional agreement. First, the school committee would have to vote for new language, then both of the towns would have to vote for, for new language, and then the commissioner would have to agree to it. So, the planning committee, which we have two members up here tonight, has been working since last January. We have consulted with the Department of Education, and have a list of thirty-nine items that they would, the commissioner would need us to address in order to have his blessing. So we want to make sure that all of the required changes are part of any agreement that we bring forward. So that is in legal review right now. I expect that to come back to the school committee in December. And then, you know, I don't have a magic crystal ball to look into the future, but if they were to vote in winter or early spring, then the votes could go to a town meeting in this spring. I would say that, you know, in any kind of a timeline, that, that sort of isn't finalized until the spring next year, would probably be a planning year. We might be able to do some of the move over the course of next year, if it was approved. But probably, it would be follow the following year for full implementation.
And so, from the school committee, by the way, we have Dr. Provost, Superintendent Aaron, the financial genius, and Michelle Vutro, who's the chair of the school committee, hiding off camera.
So submit the timeline for the record.
Thank you, sir. Ed Poole, Cameron Fire Chief.
For our budget next year, I, you know, obviously, Doug will keep it level service already, here and there. So we're working on getting our generator installed. It'll be a little bit of expense there. I don't think that's going to affect the budget, maybe.
Well, will that be after July first, you think, or inside this?
Hopefully, it'll be this year. But it's moving kind of south, so I thought I'd mention it. We have a RFQ out there for station expansion, renovation. I think that's one of the big numbers, Chuck and I was talking about. Hopefully, the RFQ will be posted shortly, and we'll do a walkthrough with the architects, working on the building committee currently to bring the names around the board for approval. We hired a third person, built our third spot. I think, only thing with the budget for, that I can think of would be, we have in there, like, the vacations, covered vacations, sick days, training. That might have needed a small, very small percentage bump up. But other than that, I think the.
Okay, besides the building, do you anticipate any capital needs?
There's no capital needs at this time. There's no new trucks. There's, the SCBA's are, you know, still in time, so.
At one time, we talked about increasing the minimum hours for the call person.
Yeah, so we're going to do a two-hour minimum. The budget that we have now would, you know, there's money in that account to cover that. I do have the paperwork. I just, we've been through the generator, through hiring someone, RFQ, I haven't had, you know, I want to mix it in with some other.
The world famous brush truck.
Yeah, so you'll be seeing me time and time again, coming up, I promise. But I do want to give a shout out to, like, our deputy chief. He's, he's usually the guy that handles all the grants. In the past four years, he's brought in just under quarter million dollars worth of grant money, and that helps out a lot with our budget. I mean, some of the state, they have one that the Massachusetts Fire Service has, that we get, and it's funded, I think, until this year. We get, like, just over twelve thousand dollars a year from that. And all, you know, all we have to do is fill out the paperwork and tell them what we're going to buy, and they approve it. So that's, that's huge. That's things that we don't have to come to the town and buy. You know, it's, it's little things, but it's hoes. It's, you know, nous, we try to get those little pieces picked up, so we don't have to put down replacement costs on the town budget.
Thank you, Jacob.
Any questions?
Madison?
I'm going to go forward. We don't anticipate any major changes for our budget for next year. Salary, your walk census.
Where are we on the, where are we on the in-law apartment, social apartment?
I think we're still going back and forth with council on language. There's some described, there's some back and forth in that, so.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Moriarty. I'm the director of the library. We had a great year, and we anticipate another great year. Our library is awesome, and we're very busy. We have a lot of things planned coming up. We always do. Circulation is good. We have a, our variety of things that people can check out. It's changing a lot. We have wonderbooks, we have launchpads, we have playaways, all this new technology, so we're keeping up with all that. And it's, it's wonderful. It's really great. People are embracing it, and no big changes. Our staff is the same and awesome, and things are pretty good.
And as for the trustees, you know, we're so blessed to have such a great library staff. And the only question we have is, will we ever get new windows?
Call Governor Healy. She kicked it out of the budget.
Seriously, you know, let us know. Is that still a need for this building?
One quick concern, Ellen, you mentioned a lot of technology you've gotten, and I'm concerned that we don't actually have that on our inventory list. You know, want to make sure that we get that done, so our insurance is done properly. Because it sounds like you have thousands and extra. No, more like the insurance, you know, for the town property. We have all that listed, so we have good coverage. So maybe work, give the list to Bob if you could.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Parks? So, oh, Carrie, don't just kick it off.
I got it. I got it. So, I'll introduce myself. Dan Blanchard has started at the, as the Parks and Rec Director at the end of September. I've been spending some time figuring out how the cash moves, how the budgets were done in the past. I have some thoughts on how I would do it going forward, but I'm just familiarizing myself with those things. We had hoped to do some capital projects with the fields at TWB and the courts at TWB, so I'd be looking to talk to Doug, actually. I was going to try to hit him up after this meeting to talk about CPA funds that could go towards that and such. But, you know, we are a little tight on our maintenance budget right now, so we may have to have a little bump there. I'm still researching it, trying to figure out where the money has gone, how come we're a little bit over right now. But we'll iron it all out and go from there, so.
We appreciate you, and welcome aboard.
No, thank you very much.
Tim?
I'm Tim, from the Cemetery Commission. We don't really anticipate any needs, other than what we get every year, salary and maintenance.
You got any luck finding anyone for your board?
Not yet.
Maybe somebody wants to be an accessory in a cemetery person. They could do clerical for Doug.
How about the new flagpole?
It's there.
Is there? Oh, good.
Just need to make more visits. Bob, quickly, recap accessories.
At my age, I kind of shy away from the cemetery sometimes.
We don't, we don't anticipate much in the way of, hey, any extras this coming year, primarily salaries. We will have some sort of a warrant article for the town meeting to take care of our so-called fund that we used to pay the DOR. That would be probably the only thing we got going. Other than that, we're pretty well good. We don't need any capital. We've got computers, we're pretty well set up, so we're in good shape with that.
Overlay and overlay reserve are both?
We're, we're doing them with that. Like Norm had indicated earlier, if there's a problem with the, the two thousand dollar thing, we can fix that going forward. So it's not a problem.
Bonnie?
Hi, Bonnie Germaine, Conservation. The only real change that I anticipate in our budget is that Bob Markle and the town administrator of Granby are looking to hire a conservation agent to share between the two towns. I'm kind of kept in the dark about that. I don't know what percentage we'll have compared to Granby. I know that the total salary is seventy thousand dollars, but I'm not sure how they're going to split that.
I think. I think.
The grant covers that, right?
The grant covers that, right. But I didn't, Bob said twenty hours for Granby and fifteen for us.
Yes, thirty-five, I believe it's thirty-five total.
I know you're concerned about, obviously, accommodation, and that's something.
We don't have any right now.
Right, I know you're concerned about it, and that's something I believe we're going to be addressing when and if that position ever gets filled.
Correct. There is no room in the, in the townhouse to put another office for him. And there's no room in my office, because I have planning board and advisory files in my office, as well as my stuff, so.
And you're going to be looking for new members as well.
Yes. In June, we'll be down to two members. That's not even, we can't even vote on anything with two members. So we're looking to recruit more members as well.
Quickly, on that matter, we've asked Bob to prepare an ad for the Times, Doug, to highlight all the openings and opportunities we have for people to participate in, in town. to highlight all the openings and opportunities we have for people to participate in town boards and commissions. So we'll get that together and.
Right, I think it's very difficult right now to get anyone to volunteer to do jobs. I mean, never mind trying to get people to go into a paid job, to go into a volunteer job. You know, just speaking to other conservation commissions, it's very difficult to try to get somebody that wants to give up time to go on site inspections. And, you know, in the winter, you're slipping and sliding in the snow and the ice and, I don't know. Hopefully there'll be people that want to do that.
We've been very fortunate with the people on your commission, you know.
Yeah, they've all been on a long time. I mean, that's why, that's why we're down, we'll be down to two people. So that's that.
Thank you. Do you want to give the report for Ken also for the veterans thing or no?
No.
Becky.
Hi, Becky Moriarty, senior center. Unlike the library, the senior center is awesome. And we are not anticipating any operational budget increases, but the senior center building committee is hopeful that at the spring town meeting, we'll have a warrant article for a potential expansion of the building. So we're working on that. But other than that, things are pretty status quo where we are. I just have one question. I know that the schedule for budgets to go to advisory is here. Is there a date for the departments that report to the Board of Selectmen for the budgets to be to you all?
We haven't set that yet. Probably, Don, you wanted to address that next week and set a calendar?
Great, thanks.
Where Health?
Well, since I'll only be here a couple of weeks into the new year, I'd love to leave with a new building on the agenda, but it's not gonna happen, I know that. I don't know.
Well, you're dealing, obviously, Board of Health is dealing with the PFAS issue.
That's the water commission as well. Like, I know it's testing and I have no idea what they're gonna do. I don't know if they're gonna require us to keep those 10 houses on or if they're gonna, if they find nothing, can we take those 10 houses on? Nothing's been established yet.
I don't think they know either, right?
I mean, we ask.
So there could be an impact, but we don't know what. If at all, okay. It's, the chief is here. It's December now, chief, to say.
Looking for razors. So if I can increase my budget to get razors. When you're saying, okay, maybe. Good evening, Scott Trombley, Chief of Police. So we are in a contract year. Negotiations will start with Board of Selectmen and our patrol officers. So we anticipate salary increase, maybe benefit increase, I believe.
Really?
I'm thinking. We are going into our regional dispatch where we're gonna own out. We're gonna start owning after July. We get the three years that we were at the zero, so looking, looking for that. I'd like to, for capital, looking for a new cruiser. They went up significantly. So that's something we'll have to talk about if we can put that into our capital.
We have been touching on the subject of hybrids. Is there any opportunity through the state that if we switched over to hybrid, and I think that was part of maybe the green community thing, you know, as they were pushing that as well?
So hybrids for the police cruisers are terrible.
Are they?
They are.
Something that Bob has been bringing up at every meeting, it seems like.
Hybrid is not the way to go right now for, for the police cruiser. Plus it's more expensive, but also the amount of time it's in a repair shop and we're not gonna use it. So I would suggest not hybrid. There are the gas and, you know, again, going into the green community, I get what they're expecting. They are working on the problems, but.
Not at this point.
Not at this point. Just for record, we are not a green community. And then, you know, we're looking for possibly, we did ask for rifles, which should come out of our budget this year. We were able to get new rifles. We're looking to look towards new pistols for another capital since the rifles are being exchanged out with the pistols are now seven, eight years old also. And to go from a 45 to a nine, which is being more consistent with area departments in the state police. So that would be a little bit of increase in our training as expectations of trying to coordinate efforts maybe to fire department, some of the training of our active shooters.
And not to put you on the spot, if you had to throw a quick capital number out to replace all the pistols, ballpark is this, 25,000? 20,000?
And the cruiser unfortunately is about 68,000. That's all outfitted.
That jumped up.
Was it like a Lexus?
Telsa, Tesla maybe?
Oh, good, you can charge it next door.
Lost my train of thought.
Oh.
Happens a lot. Bridge, everyone bridged?
So I have currently the last officer bridging right now. And they'll give us six, six officers to work part-time and then our current staff of 11, including me, are full-time.
One of them working right now.
And that sounds like somebody's going by now.
And is the post, is there any new regulation with post affect?
We're going into our last group of certifications. It'll be actually the P's through D's of the officers in our department that need to be certified. And it's a basic questionnaire with the police chief signing off on a good character. Stop.
And I think, and you're finishing the work for the licenses for Lauren at this point, right?
Excuse me?
You're finishing the work for the licenses for Lauren at this point, right?
We've already.
Yeah, we're all set.
So we can add that down in the future.
So just one last thing for post. They just did a certification for our school resource officer. The school resource officers have to be certified. And our officer, Lauren Williams, has been certified through post.
Good, thank you.
I know you said the last person was going through bridging now. How is our reserve, like part-time force, looking for the future?
It's hard to say, really. I don't expect, I mean, if we, if, if after this year, anyone that comes to us, they'll be bridged already. We lost a lot of part-time officers in the state due to the fact of the bridging going on. And so it'll be definitely difficult to, to add to our force, our time officers.
Advisory. Need a clerk.
Need a clerk.
Pleasure.
Nothing relevant to budget.
Oh, Dick, do you have any comment you'd like to make in general?
I did a deep dive into cruiser purchases last year and fully having to do with the way we hand them down to other departments. Over a third of the cost of the cruiser is outfitting. The basic cars are, in this case, probably less than $40,000, 40, 42.
No, everything went up significantly over the last year and a half.
I appreciate what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that historically, one-third of the cost is outfitting. We take a car on a service earlier to move it to another department, we're throwing away that third. We, you know, we don't get the utility, we're probably better off to go buy a Corolla or something like that for the other department rather than handing down police cars.
I know we talked in the past, and I think when we talked about potentially upgrading a non-cruiser vehicle, you were throwing a number of 12,000 to 15,000 to bring it basically up to patrol standards, cage, the whole bit. I think that's your point there.
Yeah, between that, the radio stuff, and sometimes the radar units replaced at the same time, it's an opportunity to update those. Like I said, it's, it's a significant portion of the purchase, more than I was expecting.
Quickly back to you, Scott, radio work, is that pretty much done?
Yes, radios are all working fine at this point in time. And I can't speak for Ed, but radios on, on your end for communications with the fire?
Yeah, we're just waiting for the officers' radios to be.
So that would be.
So capitalize your all sense.
As far as the salary lines there, I'll go through and do all the, the step calculations on everybody and over the next two weeks or so and send them out to all the department heads so they know what they're working with on steps in case they've lost track.
Okay, I appreciate it, yep.
Any, any guess on him, the country retirement?
Oh, I'm sure it's gonna be horrendous.
Thank you.
It is what it is.
And the health, the health benefits, the?
I don't have a calculation on that. We are doing okay. We're in pretty good shape. The, the, the health trust is doing a very good job. We had a, the seniors, which is our senior medical, which is medical supplement, which is a very small portion, we do, went up just like 2% on one of them and flat rate on the other. Right now, I'm guessing that we'll be setting rates in March probably for fiscal next year, but we're running pretty good, so I don't see any reason to get it too hard.
But no, no preliminary number from Blue Cross or any of the others what they're looking for? I mean, obviously they always look for a huge number and you negotiated down at all.
You're talking about, you're talking about a policy that starts seven months from now.
Right.
No, we don't have any.
Well, we usually, at my office, we usually start getting the usual, oh my gosh, you're gonna see a 9% jump or something.
We self-insure.
Yeah.
So they don't care. I mean, they do their projections, our consultant does their projections. Eric and I beat them down to a lower percentage than they always ask. And right now, as of last month, we're in good shape. Yeah, we're, everybody stay healthy, we'll be okay.
Good to know. Goes right into cliff then.
This is not an audit year for me, so I won't be looking for a large number for the audit, which was completed already. We don't have a report back. And I'm gonna imagine that you're gonna wanna do a exit interview with either Tom or Jeff in the future or something. We don't have the report back yet.
Okay.
I have, the only thing I need is paper and I usually take that from the townhouse.
Arm, anything to add?
No, I think Bob pretty much covered it. And like I said, we just have that warrant article that we're gonna do annually and everything else will be pretty much what we expected to be. Nothing, nothing big.
Okay. Building Department.
Hi, Wendell Holver, your building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, stormwater designated agent, whatever else.
All-around good guy.
Situation normal for us. I mean, building's been crazy since COVID and doesn't show any sign of slowing up. It just keeps us busy. We do all our inspections. We just did the restaurants and bars. They all came through in flying colors because now they know the schedule, so they know what to expect every year. And we just move on. I keep working with Kelly and other departments to keep her up to date with regards to the status of the solar field or what's on the burner. And we continue to submit building permits daily, I think, for them. We adjust our, our fee schedule a little bit with regards to like residential solar and some other items. And it's made a pretty big difference, I think, in my budget just from being a cookie cutter rate to more, you know, when it's a larger project, you have to review more. And the rules have all changed with regards to rooftop solar and solar batteries. It's just coming in into the new code. I think Ed's fire code has changed. So that's a whole nother thing that we're gonna be dealing with. But other than that, situation normal.
Business as usual.
Yeah, not looking for anything. I mean, if Scott has extra guns or a nice, what did Dick say? A Toyota Corolla might be in order. That'll might be something we'd be interested in the future. Because at some point, Emmett's gonna have to make a decision to get their building department at some sort of vehicle. When I roll up with my truck, they think I'm looking for work. There's nothing on the side door that identifies me. So I'm always jumping into a lion's bit when I'm doing all the unpermitted stuff.
You're stealthy. You're stealthy.
Well, I put my camera on record and stick it on my dashboard so everybody can see what I have to go through sometimes. But other than that, it's fine. Everything's going well.
Good. And John, welcome to the advisory.
Thank you.
Mark.
Good evening, Mark Langdoni, Highway Department. I do have a few items that I'd like to bring to the board's attention. Doug's and Dick's. Having a conversation with Tony Gentile the other day, he indicated to me that he wanted to see us or me provide a line item or an account for our radio communications. In the, for the past two or three years, he's been covering that amount, which wasn't all that much, maybe 70, 8,000 to begin with. It maybe jumped up a thousand or two each year out of a grant that he gets. This, this isn't, this conversation isn't over. I wasn't given a reason or anything, but it was just something that he had mentioned to me. So I wanted to, you know, relay that, that possibility. He was supposed to get back to me with a figure tonight or today. But if I had to guess, I would think, I would say around 12,000 for that particular radio service. It's a cellular digital, which has worked well for us, actually, so.
So it's not, it's not equipment, it's just now covering the annual cost basis?
I'm sorry, yeah, it's like, it's a lease agreement.
No, he's already got the equipment, what I'm saying.
Or they can continue on the.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. And that covers, you know, if we have any issues, and I have to say, the company we've been dealing with, they've been very responsive. And, you know, if there's an issue that they, that they can't work out, they just give us new equipment, no questions asked. So I haven't had any issues or complaints or anything with our service or with our agreement, lease agreement, whatever.
So these radios now make you compatible with police and fire or?
No, they don't, no. These are the, this is what we agreed to do a few years back. I found myself, and this goes back to even before, to before Scott, but I found myself kind of left out of the, the loop as far as communications go. However, we do have a line. I kept all of my old handheld radios and I do have a line through the fire channel that in an emergency, that would be our, our backup to be able to talk to police, fire and dispatch. The current system we have is only connected right to central dispatch.
I'm not saying, I thought this was more of a universal, you know, so now we got a single-use type thing at a high cost.
But it goes through the regional dispatch office?
It is, yes.
I'll jump in for a second because I know exactly what Mark's talking about. So when they went through to police and fire, went through all the radio communication upgrades, DPW didn't get anything. They were still relying on old hand-me-down VHF radios from police and fire from decades ago. They're, they're pretty outdated equipment that they had. Mark's team was having a tough time communicating between base and trucks on the road in winters. There's dead spots all over because they don't use repeaters. They use simplex, point-to-point communications. So a lot of their stuff was not getting through. And they, they had a couple of storms where they couldn't communicate with trucks to get to a couple of different locations for sanding and plowing and whatnot. So Tony found these, they were cellular options. They're, they're two-way radios. They're, they run through the cellular network and every vehicle's got one in there. Tony got a grant form for the three years, I believe it was, right? The three years. And after the grant ran out, it would have to become a line item on his budget, you know, communications line item like police and fire currently have. But because they're a cellular communication, there's no tie to, I mean, fire doesn't talk to police, police don't talk to fire, they're different channels, different frequencies. So it's pretty much the same thing. If they want to communicate, they could just get another receiver and communicate. But the, the aspect of it was to solve a problem in the short term because there was no thought into his radio communications prior to that. If it's something we want to change going forward, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty substantial upgrade too to get him a, a repeater channel and stuff like that.
And we did talk about that. We talked about re, re-establishing possibly the repeater or the tower up on, rehabbing the tower up on Mountain Road. We did go through some options and they were, they were pretty pricey. And this, at the time, I mean, yeah, it was great, great price. It was free for the first couple, few years, but now. But again, I'm not done talking to him about that.
Let me understand because I'm not too bright. So a tree goes down, blocks a road, or the fire department, the police department says there's a tree blocking a road, right? We need the highway department to come out. They call dispatch?
Yes.
Dispatch calls you?
Correct.
But you don't talk to him directly?
Nope, no, you don't. And that was one of the, that was one of the, I guess, maybe you want to call it luxuries that I didn't, I did miss with, with this system. There was, there's really something to be said about, you know, on a. There was, there's really something to be said about, you know, in a storm or, or an emergency situation where that we have direct contact with either the chief or the fire, either police chief, fire chief, or, or any of the, you know, trucks or squad cars. So that was something we had to give up for the time being.
A lot of that based on terrain, really.
Just to counter on that though, you don't want police directly communicating to DPW without a record going through dispatch. So you'd want them to contact dispatch first.
Because you want the record.
You want the record, yeah.
And we had that, well, when dispatch was in the hands, we did have that automatically. So again, it would, sometimes there's a, you know, a time period there that but not often.
Okay.
But yeah, civil communications.
So he's got this lengthy piece of paper in his hand.
Oh, it's not that bad. So that was the first, the first.
Big letter, big letters.
The second thing is, is I'm gonna have, I will have a full-time employee retiring, so I wanted to make that. I haven't figured out the specifics yet, but I'll have that ready in no time for Dick and the board and Doug, if, if you needed to.
Would that be a, so would that be a buyback impact for next fiscal year?
For '25.
Okay.
Yes. And then the last thing, capital-wise, I was looking at possibly, at potentially purchasing a new pickup truck, new F-150 to replace our 20, 2012 that has just under 100,000 miles on it. I just want to touch on something real quick that Chief Trombley mentioned about the prices going up. I did find out today that with the state bid list, the state has reduced the amount of money, it seems, not just with Fords, but with other manufacturers and dealers. They've reduced the amount of money, so I'm told. I want to look into this more because I just found this out today, that they're contributing to the state bid. So that makes the town, the municipal portion of the, the cost of the purchase higher. Whereas before they would contribute, maybe it could be $8,000 to $10,000 in some cases, depending on, on the item or the, the piece of equipment. Where now they're down to, you know, $1,000 to $3,000. They're, they're.
So it's not so much the vehicle going up, it's just we're carrying more of the load?
Well, the vehicles are going up too.
But not, but, but the increase in our contribution is driving more of the increase.
It's helping a lot, especially with our, at least in my, at least what I've noticed. I'm not, I don't want to speak for, for Scott or Ed or anybody else, but that's, yeah. I mean, and that goes along with everything, all our parts, every, everything, the, the prices are through.
So similar to the new truck we got maybe a year or so ago, what would delivery be on this type of vehicle? Are we gonna see the same type of delay?
It's very possible. So what, what these dealerships are doing now, and this is something else I, I wanted to bring up even for, even at the last, for Fall Town meeting. They're being allotted so many bills per six months. And now every dealership or every truck outfitter has a different timeline. We happen to, we happen to get lucky when we bought, when we purchased the Mack or placed the order for the Mack. I mean, that, that truck is due to come in in December. That was a quick turnaround because we made the cutoff for that particular six-month order period. If you miss that order period, you're, you could, Frank, you could lose the whole year and, and see it, you know, the following, the following year. And that's, that's a real possibility. How I wanted to tie that into Fall Town meeting is that I think maybe going forward, and I'll just, you know, throw it out there, but maybe with certain pieces of equipment, it might be better for us to vote on, on that, on Fall Town meeting so that we can catch that order period so that it'll work well for us and we're not waiting the year or year-plus for, for a piece of equipment.
Are you estimating that if we, if you brought forward a request for a new pickup truck that was July 1st money, would you anticipate not getting that truck until '25?
I would, but that's worst case. I mean, if we can, I don't know what their, what their cutoff is, and I'll have to call a few, a few different places and see, you know, how they can, how, how they can make it work. But if they're all the same, then we're but that's, that's a good possibility.
All right. Well, you got the new, you got the new building. Is there anything else?
No, that's it. And, and I don't see any, I don't foresee any issue, well, major issues or anything to come up in, in 2025.
Is this a contract year? Following you, right?
It is not.
Good.
Well, it is not a full contract year.
All right. Anybody else I didn't call upon? Lauren?
Got nothing.
Lauren? Anything from the board? Don, right?
I'm good.
Great. Well, sorry to put you all through the ringer. Thank you all for sharing. This is important for people, the vast number of people on Zoom. But I think Bob has also mentioned in the past that we get quite a few views on these YouTube videos. So what you said tonight will probably be viewed by the people in town, and they like hearing from their neighbors. People going through the same thing they are. I mean, you're talking about spending your tax dollars as well and taking good care of it. We really appreciate that. So I want to thank you all for coming tonight. As always, the door is always open. Don will be happy to take your calls 24/7.
I would.
Thank you.
Room on the treadmill, the more you wish.
Call magic first.
Refrain yourself.
Have a good night.
Thank you for your work, Kelly. All right, so the next thing on the thing is cell tower lease. Looking for you that, based on last. Still looking at it over. The one thing is, it will need town meeting. So, yes. Yes, so again, I won't. At least not do ahead as much because now we have a little more time to work. Important thing is. Other things, I know we, we did talk, John, last week, a couple of, like sliding all those projects over to, to New York or not.
You working this week?
What's that?
Are you working this week?
He's being sarcastic.
I can't hear what you're talking about before that, sir.
Set the schedule.
For agenda items.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna like, I'm gonna like empower you.
Start the ball off.
I don't like it. We talked about. Things, so. Anything?
Water questions being tomorrow morning.
Plan bond on the project, right?
Yeah, they gave us a short presentation, but we threw on their lap at that last meeting that there was 10 additional homes. So we weren't sure how that was gonna go yet, whether we're gonna be mandated to test those definitely or if it was just a one-time thing. That could change the whole project.
I would imagine so.
A lot.
That's suggesting by facility upgrade.
I, I think it would make sense to do that for them later. Sure, yeah, because of the fact that that's. It's an in-ground tank. It hasn't run out yet.
Right.
Yeah, and that the state's kinda looking to like.
And they should, they should give us a creep of that, though.
Sure, let's give another mandate to a town and not give them any money.
Yeah, great. Oh, Jane, yeah. We can quickly talk about the tree lighting.
That's exactly when I wanted to.
Committee meeting tomorrow.
Penny, Penny.
Nice. I'll see you on Zoom. Oh, no, you too. So we obviously didn't have a tree lighting last Friday and, or last Sunday. This Sunday looks worse.
Yeah, it does.
On the other hand, since John Quill's not around, I think the, you know, the projections are pretty poor.
Tom said it would be like this.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, it's too. I was saying 85% from next Sunday.
Even worse winds too.
So at this point.
I just go out and light it? Can I just go out and light it? Like, can be done? I mean, really? You go any closer, it's Christmas.
Right.
Well, the library has, they had their, Mrs. Claus comes to the library already. They've done that part.
No, I think they're having it.
I think so, coming up, right?
Coming up, yeah.
So at this point, with the inclement weather, we typically have it on a Sunday. Unless the board wants to have a different night, I think we just tell them, Jane, to push the button.
I'm for it. Okay.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I'll call Linda.
Because you gotta get the Green Meadow kids. Yeah.
They can't. It's coming weekend.
If they can't sing, it's up to the three of us and nobody wants that.
I can drum.
Finn can play the what?
Snare drummer. He's a drummer.
No, his brother does. He, Finn does the drum. Yeah, his brother does the bagpipes.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
So you want me to go light it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Please.
I'm gonna go put a coat on.
Go light it. No, do it now. What you want?
Well, yeah.
Okay, then, great.
It looked.
Biggest thing we got done tonight.
We will make decisions.
See? I'm good for something.
Oh, stop.
Don't say it.
Pickleball injury?
No, basketball.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Again, we don't have a town minister report. I'm sure we'll get a pretty detailed one for next week. We wish the best to Bob.
Bob's not online.
Nope. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Who's the seven participants?
I see Dalton, Ted, Joe. Joe, how'd you guys make out yesterday? All right?
All right, welcome to adjourned, second.
Hold on a minute. All on favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you all.